It is 7:30. We're ready to go. We call our regular city council meeting to order for December 20th, 2021. We're all here. Let's stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All individuals are asked to either silence or turn off all cell phones, pagers, and other electronic devices that may disrupt the meeting. Approval of the agenda. Approve the agenda as posted in accordance with the open meeting law. In herein, place all agenda items on the table for discussion with the addition under new business, item K, Camp Ripley Veteran State Trail DNR Agreement. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the minutes. Special work session meeting of December 6, 2021, and the regular meeting of December 6, 2021. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to approve the minutes.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Liljegren. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Approval of the bills. Checks 105951 through 106033 totaling $698,763.01. Approve. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve the bills.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Canofla. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Awards, donations, presentations, and proclamations, we have none. Consent agenda. Building report, October-November 2021, receive. Fire report, November 2021, receive. Heritage Preservation Commission minutes, December 2021, receive. Morrison County Attorney's Prosecution Report, September and October 2021, receive. Police report, November 2021, receive. Public Works Report, November 2021, receive. Reschedule regular city council meetings, legal holidays, affirm. Review financial statements, December 2020, Schlenner, Wetter &amp; Company, Morrison County Animal Humane Society, receive. Wastewater Report, November 2021, receive. What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to receive. Receive. And is there any... Nope. Receive and affirm the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Hanson. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Public hearings and lettings. Lettings. Body worn cameras, in-car video, TASER, Axon Enterprises for the Police Department to award unauthorized chief.
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the council. As you recall, at the November 15th council meeting, I presented the need to implement body worn cameras at the Police Department and the need to replace and upgrade our current mobile video recorders and TASERS. At the December 6th council meeting, I presented the data results of the body worn camera community survey posted on the city and the Police Department's website. And we also allowed for public comment to assist with the development of the body worn camera policy. At this time, I'm requesting authorization to enter into two 10-year agreements with Axon Enterprise, Inc. for the purchase of mobile video recorders, body worn cameras, and TASERS. The total cost of the 10-year agreements is $551,465.35 with yearly payments of $55,146.54 beginning January of 2022 and will be budgeted for annually for the remainder of the agreement. So the two agreements, the first one would be the Core Plus Agreement, which is the body worn camera and TASER agreement, and the second is the Fleet 3 for the mobile video recorders. This has been a collaborative effort with the Morrison County Sheriff's Office and other law enforcement agencies in Morrison County to identify our goals with implementing a body worn camera program and identifying a vendor. Through this process, we selected Axon Enterprise, Inc. Axon is also well-established in the industry in Minnesota and has been recommended by other law enforcement agencies. The funds for this purchase are included in the 2022 capital improvement budget, and this pricing is part of the Sourcewell contract pricing.
Thank you. What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Geotechnical Services, Braun Intertech, Public Improvement 397, award. Greg.
Good evening, Mr. President, council members. It's hard to believe, but we are actually starting to gear up for our 2022 construction season. We are looking at a number of different segments for 2022. Those areas are Fourth Street East, Gale Drive, Circle Drive, and potentially a pond location. With those locations, we'd like to get geotechnical services or soil borings, just to find out what type of soils we have there, where the bedrock is at, the depth of the water table, as well as... As well as what type of... If there's any blacktop or anything like that on the area. We did solicit proposals for these services from two firms. Braun Intertech out of St. Cloud is the low quote for it at $14,360. So we are asking the council to award the low quote to Braun Intertech out of St. Cloud in an amount of $14,360, and that would be charged to the project.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to award.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Water main loop engineering services, Bolton &amp; Mink, award. Greg.
Good evening. Thank you. So one of the other projects that we're looking at is a water main loop. If you recall, in 2021, we completed earlier this year, we completed a study or model on our water main system. There were a couple of areas that they identified where there's potential issues with our system, and mainly it was our two long water main dead ends that we have, one on Lindbergh Drive South, one on Hilton Road over by the golf course. One of the things that they also modeled was a connection between the two and what that would do for the age of the water, as well as any pressure spikes. We solicited a proposal from Bolton &amp; Mink out of Brainerd or Baxter, I should say, to complete that work, both the design as well as the construction services for that. And that comes in at $166,715. So this evening, we are asking the council to approve that work with Bolton &amp; Mink, and that would be charged to the Water Improvement Fund.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to award the water main loop engineering services to Bolton &amp; Mink.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Canofla. Any discussion?
I have a couple of questions. So this is just the engineering cost. This does not even begin to cover the cost of the construction.
That's correct. We're estimating the project to come in right around $800 to $1,000... Or $1 million for that loop. It does not cover the construction of it. It's just the engineering. So construction engineering as well as the design engineering for the project.
Okay. And my next question is, our water pressure comes from gravity, right?
Yes.
Okay. So how is the water going to flow? Is it going to go from the east to the west? Is it going to make a big circle?
So a lot of times with water mains, you like to loop the water main. So you like to have it... So if one... If there's a break over here, you can still get water coming around. It has a couple of benefits. One, if there's a break, you can still get water to the backside of it. The other benefit is if there's a sudden surge in water, whether it's on or off, there's a wave that's created when that occurs. And so that wave has a circular place to go. If it's just a dead end and it's stopped, it goes back, it hits that, and now all of a sudden, it has to get pushed back. That's what causes water hammer, and it creates those large pressure spikes because right there is where, you know, the force is going this way, and now all of a sudden, you're making it go back the other direction. So by looping this water main on the south end, you take away that long dead end on Lindbergh as well as on Hilton to give it that loop to get back around, and that will help fix those problems.
Keep flowing around.
It'll keep flowing around, yep.
So do they... Are they able to bore underneath there and put a pipe in?
Yep.
That big?
I envision them to put directional drill or bore underneath the Mississippi River. It's probably most likely going to be requirement of the DNR.
How deep is the river right there?
I don't know that answer.
Depends on how much water's in the river.
You know.
Very good point.
It's a lot... It's a lot shallower than it is above. To Blanchard Dam, it's really deep there.
Oh, I'm looking right in the spring when it's high. I'm just guessing, having been on there, 15 feet. It's starting to get shallower by the time you hit the golf course. But you don't have to go very far south of here where you could have 27 feet of water.
Any other discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Old Business. Amendment Number 1, Contract 151115, Minnesota Department of Natural Resources, Camp Ripley Veteran State Trail, approve. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is the first of the two agreements that we have. One is in the new business, but this one obviously is in old business. So the Agreement 151115 is with the DNR. If you recall, back in 2018/19, we entered into an agreement with the DNR to use about $1 million worth of funds that they received for the Camp Ripley Bedroom State Trail. That included the design and the construction, as well as the construction engineering for that segment of it. We used all of it, except for about $55,000 is what's remaining in it. Per the original agreement, it was slated to expire December of this year, and so we'd like to continue with that relationship with the DNR to try to use the other $55,000 that we have slated for us. And so we look to amend the agreement, which gives us another year to utilize those funds. So if the council is willing this evening, we'd like to approve that amendment to that contract.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve.
Second.
Go ahead.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President. Greg, now, you're saying that this money can't be used to maintain the...
Nope.
Those very trails?
Correct. This is just for design, construction, and construction engineering.
So do you know what part of the trail... What leg of the trail we're going to do?
Probably the east side, over on 18th Street Southeast is my suspicion. We've got... Or the DNR's got a segment that they're bringing up close to city limits, and so we'd be looking at extending that portion of it.
And is that the...
The motorized side. Yep.
What do you anticipate the cost to cross railroad tracks on the east side here?
Right over here?
Mm-hmm.
I don't know. I know railroad crossings are expensive. I was just looking at that this morning, just to see what it would take. I'll have to reach out to BNSF just to see what it is, because they would have to have some crossing work completed on it, and it could get expensive quick.
Yeah. That would be good to know, because, you know, I'll talk about the other part when we get to it.
Yep.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Change order number one, Knife River, Little Falls Area Recreational Complex Improvements. Approve. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. So as you may or may not know, up at the Little Falls Area Recreation Complex, we paved the parking lot up there. We did work with Knife River in regards to that. We did have them bring in some additional topsoil to restore the area. It was more than what the quantities originally called for, but in order to establish everything out there, we wanted to bring in enough topsoil for that. And so it was in the amount of $3,860 in additional topsoil is what we had them bring in. It is a unit price contract, so the unit price stayed the same. It's just we just overran the quantities. One of the accounting things that the auditors want to see now is basically the price along with all of the change orders now matches the final dollar amount. So basically a final out change order, if you will, and that's what this is, to basically make those two numbers match at the end of the day. So if the council is willing, we'd like to approve change order number one in the amount of $30,000, $3,860. That would be charged to the Park Improvement Fund.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to approve change order number one for Knife River.
Second.
Recreational Complex.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Housing Study Draft, Community Partners Research Incorporated, receive. John.
Thank you, Council President. As we spoke in the work session, you should have received the draft for the housing study completed by Community Partners Research. In our contract with them that we approved earlier in the year, along with what the HRA had approved, we had anticipated that we would be receiving all of the census data by a time in which we could complete the project by the end of the year. Unfortunately, we didn't get all of the census data, but we did get enough, and they were able to extrapolate with historical data from different surveys and different information to do some of the components. But there was a significant amount of information that what they were able to complete prior to that with the census data that was released. So I just wanted to make sure that we acknowledge that we did get it. We did get it by the end of the year, and that you have an opportunity to also review it, and we'll present it later at an HRA meeting, as well as at the City Council, to do the final versions of the draft. But tonight, it's just to receive it.
What is the wish of the council?
Move to receive.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Canofla, second by Councilmember Lundberg. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2021-97, Order and Streetlight, Weston Circle, adopt. Greg.
Good evening. Thank you. So at our last meeting, we received a petition to install a streetlight at Weston Circle and Caroline Lane. This does meet City Policy Number 26 in regards to streetlights. And so this evening, we are asking the council to approve Resolution 2021-97 to install a 100-watt equivalent LED at the intersection of Weston Circle and Caroline Lane, along with authorizing Minnesota Power to install it.
What is the wish of the council?
Council President, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-97, ordering a streetlight on Weston Circle.
Second.
Thank you. Thank you. Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
I do have a really quick... We need a resolution to put up a streetlight? Yeah. Okay.
Call and roll, please.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
All in favor.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Carries.
Safe Routes to School Engineering Amendment, Bolton &amp; Mink, approve. Greg.
Thank you. If you recall, in 2020, December of 2020, we did work with Bolton &amp; Mink to do the construction engineering on our Safe Routes to School project. Those of you that have seen the project, it did take quite a long time to complete that project. The original contract amount was $31,095. It took considerably more time to do that. So far, they've incurred $60,797.50. There is some additional work to be done, and so we are asking the council to amend the proposal from Bolton &amp; Mink for an additional $38,405 to bring the total up to $69,500 for the construction area services. This would be charged to the Safe Routes to School project.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve Safe Routes to School Engineering Amendment.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. This additional $38,000, is that going to fix the problems that are on that Safe Routes to School? Because that project is... They did not do a very good job of planning and installing that project, because you get rain, we got floods. You get rain, we got ice. We got... I mean, it is terrible. I've heard nothing but complaints about that.
So that project is not complete. It's not closed out yet. There's obviously punchless items, plus some other items that are remaining in the spring. So they've spent just under $61,000 in construction engineering right now. They're anticipating another $8,000 roughly in construction engineering, which is basically time to observe the contractor to see what they're doing. So yes, that should take all that into consideration next spring, once the ground thaws and the contractor gets back here to do that work. So yes, that... We're aware of a lot of those things, and yes, that does need to get completed yet.
Okay.
I have a couple of questions, though. Is... Did they design it that way? That it's... Or that poorly, that water runs onto the path and stays there instead of draining?
So actually, we designed it in-house, but we intended to have a swale in between the two, and the problem with it was the more of the install as opposed to the design. Most of you live in the Riverwood area, so you know it's sand. I mean, it takes water like there's no tomorrow. When they installed the Class 5, they made it much wider than what was needed. Class 5 does not drain at all. And so when you've got... If your ditch is right here and there's Class 5 underneath it, it's not going to drain. This is intended to be all that sand that we have everywhere up there. And so that's what we're looking at, is trying to get that to drain, and that's one of the things that we're looking at fixing in the springtime.
Okay. And the second thing is it's additional because Anderson Brothers' lack of speed?
Correct.
Shouldn't they be paying the difference?
So there is liquidated damages in the contract, and that would be looking to offset some of this cost, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
And usually, a job like this, you know, you give them a 10% leeway, but this is substantially more.
It's more than double the original amount.
It is.
Right.
It doesn't make them look very professional.
Well, and I will say, this is nothing Bolton &amp; Mink could have done any different. The challenge with our type of work, we don't get to select the contractor, lowest responsive responsible bidder. Normally, I will say Anderson Brothers is a good contractor. Normally, we haven't had any issues with it. This past year, I think all of the construction industry has seen the challenges with staffing. They're just... There's not enough people to do the work. And so when they were doing the work, it took much longer than what anybody had anticipated, even Bolton &amp; Mink. And because of the way that the projects are set up, if they're working, we have to be there to provide oversight and see what they're doing. And that's the time that it took is just additional time to be able to do it. You know, there's concrete that needs to be constantly tested, densities and everything like that that need to be tested because of the grant funds that we have for it.
Yeah, Mr. President. So from what I heard then is, we're going to pay this bill, but we're going to recover the cost, extra cost, from the construction company?
So we'll be looking at doing liquidated damages on Anderson Brothers. I don't have those totals yet, so I can't say if it's going to cover all of it or what portion of it. But yes, there would be liquidated damages on it.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Work Change Directive 20, Rice Lake Construction Group, Wastewater Improvement Project, approve.
Thank you. So Work Change Directive Number 20 is essentially field change orders that occur at the wastewater treatment facility to make sure that the new plant works the way that was intended to. There's a couple of items, if you look to the next page of work, kind of breaks everything out in there, that we wanted to make sure that all of those things got taken care of. And so as they're doing the work, they'd ask, you know, for instance, there was a lift station, they had some sump pumps in there. You want to make sure that the lift stations, the sump pumps are reconnected, and the answer is obviously yes. And so there's a cost in there to do that. And so there's a number of them that we've got. We worked with both myself, Matt, Matt Strite down at the waste plant, the superintendent, as well as Colin Marcusson with SCH in regards to those items. So we are asking the council to approve Work Change Directive Number 20 in the amount of $37,342.87 to Rice Lake Construction.
What is the wish of the council?
I make a motion to approve Work Change Directive Number 20.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Mayor Zilka. Any discussion?
Yeah, just one, Mr. President. I know we've gone through a couple of these work change adjustments throughout this project. Do you have right off hand how... What percentage above the bidded amount we're over with these change orders?
Well, I'll park... I think we're... And I don't have the exact number in front of me, but I think we're right around that 6% to 7% amount. I know we had roughly a $1 million change order in there, and that was the biggest one, is... Was that $1 million one. All of them have been relatively small compared to the project size. So we're about that 7% is what we're at overall.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. New Business Personnel Park Maintenance Worker Recommendations, Paul Karst and Benjamin Messinger, accept and appoint.
All right. Thank you. Good evening. Thank you. Thank you. Good evening. So recently, it was authorized, the park maintenance positions for posting, and we had 16 applications come in. All of them were very... We were interested in. We had 10 of them that were interviewed by myself, Mr. Rademacher, Kimmon, and Pete Pulaski. And we came down to our two opening positions, offering that to Paul Karst and Benjamin Messenger at the pay grade three step one. We would like approval.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve Park Maintenance Worker Recommendations.
I'll second that.
Motion by Councilmember Goschek, second by Councilmember Canofla. Any discussion?
Starting tomorrow?
They are starting tomorrow morning, yes.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Police Officer Investigator Position Description, Points, Pay Grade, and Post, approve.
Okay. Thank you. So as you're aware, during the 2022 budget meeting, we discussed increased demand in the workload over at the Police Department. One of those needs is for investigation. We had spoken with the county, and Shermer's has given a really good case to all of us about workload over there. So we want to add the Police Officer Investigator Position. Position was scored at 365 points, which places it in a pay grade nine. The position when hired will start at a step one unless it is a promotion within the city, then contractual rules will apply for that. Yeah.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll move to approve the Police Officer Investigator Position Description, Points, Pay Grade, and the Post.
I'll second.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2021-96, Establish Part-Time Steps and Wage Adjustment, adopt.
Thank you. So we are looking to update our part-time seasonal and temporary employee step structure. Our current structure starts at a current pay grade one and two. We're looking to eliminate pay grades one and two. Therefore, grade three will essentially become grade one, resulting in a 1220 per hour pay grade starting, and then a 3362, maxing out that pay grade out of pay grade 10. So we would be going from, if you look on the next page, the pay grade one minimum was 1008, and new pay grade minimum will be 1220 for 2022. And this was due to our ability to recruit, compete with local businesses. McDonald's is $16 an hour, so $11 was not substantial for recruiting purposes, and we definitely felt that this year. So we would like to establish this new pay grade structure for our part-time employees.
What is the wish of the council?
Council President, I move to adopt Resolution 2021-96.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion? Resolution, call and roll, please.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushik?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Carries.
Airport Commission Recommendation, Instrument Approach.
Cat, Catmire? Cattermas, Lee, and Jackson.
Lee and Jackson, accept and approve.
Thank you, Mr. President. In front of you, we have a proposal from Cattermas, Lee, and Jackson to do the instrument approach engineering services for runway 13. Currently, one of the sides of the main runway, which is side 31, has an instrument approach that allows aircraft to come in, use the instruments to be able to land in the event of inclement weather, so if it's foggy. But it's only on the one side, so we'd like to get that on the other side as well. We did speak with the Airport Commission, they are recommending approval on that. This is contingent upon grant approval. And so we'd like approval for that in the amount of $27,846.15, and that would be charged to the Airport Improvement Fund. And again, contingent upon grant approval.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to accept and approve the Airport Commission Recommendation.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Knopfler. Any discussion?
Yeah, one quick question, Mr. President. Will this allow the airport to maybe raise some fees on, on some of the things they have out there where this might be able to recover any of those costs?
So this will not be able to raise any fees. You're probably talking about some of the leases and stuff out there. This wouldn't have any effect on that. But it's something that we're looking at, at reviewing, just to see if we are in line with some of the other, other airports surrounding us. But most of the time, the funds that we get for the airport, there is a pretty sizable grant component of it, to it. Usually, it's a 90% grant, 5% state and 5% local that we share with, with the county. So with our projects, it's very heavily subsidized, if you will, in terms of grant dollars for, for that work out there.
Do we get, is them grant dollars based on number of flights in and out of the airport?
So this one will be. So in order to get to an instrument approach, it has to have a certain number of operations, so either land offs or takeoffs or landings. I don't know what that number is, but I, I know K L J's got that number because they told it to me once before. We're, we're over that, and so I have no doubt that we'll be able to, to get the grant, but I always want to make sure, just to make sure that they've got enough funds in it that were awarded a grant.
Mr. President, Greg, the activity out there has increased
Dramatically.
so much over the last five to 10 years.
Yep.
With new people becoming pilots, and we're building hangars out there.
Yep.
And that's where we do get some revenue, but
Yep.
just having all those people building the hangars and all the activity is great for our community.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Aquifer Study, Short, Elliott, and Hendrickson, approve and authorize.
Thank you. If you remember back in 2014, we did an aquifer study. Couple of the areas that we looked at was one at the fire hall, as well as at the, the airport to see what type of aquifer was down there. Both of them had good results. The aquifer at the fire hall was shown to be in the same aquifer as our current well field, and so it's an option for us, but we were looking at a second aquifer. In the event that this one gets contaminated, we wanted a second source to make sure that we could provide water to, to the city of Little Falls. So the airport, when we tested that, that was from another aquifer, and so that was kind of the, the place that we were initially looking at going. And so over the years that we've done projects, we've run, ran a raw water line down a number of the streets to be able to get down that direction. We've come to the possibility of looking at another site, which is a little bit closer than, than the airport. It still would, would use that same raw water line, and so we want to work with S E H, who did the original aquifer study, to test that site to see if it is viable, and to see if it'll, it'll produce the amount of water that we're looking for, for our, for our treatment facility. And so we are asking the council to approve the aquifer study with S E H in the amount of $35,500, and that would be charged to the Water Improvement Fund.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve Aqua, Aquifer Study with Short, Elliott, Hendrickson.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Goschek. Any discussion?
Yes, where is that other aquifer site?
Do you know where Stan Walensky Field is?
Yes.
Potentially there.
That's what I was thinking. Okay.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Consultant Service Contract for Zoning, Sourcewell, authorize and approve. John.
Thank you, Council President. So our planning and zoning services, a couple of years ago, we contracted with Sourcewell to, to provide that service for us. That contract is, is due to expire at the end of this year. In the, in the most recent months, we've actually been having some conversations with Sourcewell. I met with their program director for this work, and they are exploring some changes in that, in how they operate this, that department. In a, in those discussions, requested that if we, that we look, we would really like to continue our service. We're very satisfied with the, with the service that we get with them, and we want to continue. However, what they're indicated right now, and things could change, but what they indicated were that their service delivery would not meet our current expectations. So what we agreed upon was that we would request a renewal for at least one year with termination clause not to, no less than 120 days, so that we would have proper notification that if they did, did indeed change their program delivery and couldn't meet the scope of work that we have outlined in this contract, that we would have time to do some sort of evaluation, RFP process, or total service delivery process, process for us, and, and be able to accommodate that within a reasonable timeframe. So my, our, our ask, and what they did commit to, is that they would give us a year with that 120-day termination clause, otherwise the, the contract is, is as it was for that same service delivery. We have had a new person, that Darren Wally was our, our service person from Sourcewell. Jake Hubst is doing that now, since Darren moved on, actually works for the county now.
What is the wish of the council?
I'll make a motion to approve a consultant service contract for zoning with Sourcewell.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Lease Agreement, Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau, approve. John.
Thank Council President. This is another renewal as it was this year, if you recall in 2020, with the impact of the pandemic and the closures for bars and restaurant and lodging. The Convention Visitors Bureau, which is heavily dependent upon our restaurant and lodging tax that we collect and redistribute to them for tourism services in our community, dramatically impacted their, their revenue. During this year, things did improve quite a bit, and we, I do feel comfortable that we're, we're back on track. However, a lot of that revenue and tracking didn't come to us in timely fashion, so we, we weren't entirely certain of what expectations we had. So it is, we are asking that we have one more year of rent free for the C V B to utilize the Rosenmeyer property for their offices.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to adopt Resolution, or the lease agreement with the Little Falls Convention and Visitors Bureau.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion?
Yes, the money for the lease went back into the maintenance of the building anyway, so this is just gonna affect that. But the building's pretty sound now. I mean, for now, the porch could probably use a total rebuild.
The two biggest things are the porch, and we have had some issues with some windows in, in the facility as well. I know there was some, Chris did some work to help with some leaks and access for critters in the basement. She sealed up a lot of that, and, but the porch definitely needs a lot of attention. We are well aware of it and looking at what repairs we can make. But we did invest in the siding on the building a number of years, a couple of years ago, and that was a vast improvement. But the, I'd say the porch is, is up there, and the windows are starting to show some struggles too.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Resolution 2021-77, Decertify Tax Increment Financing District 38 Airborne Expansion and Relocation, adopt. Lori.
Yes, the resolution you have in front of you would decertify TIF District 38. That district was established about 10 years ago for the expansion of airborne. That district has met its statutory duration, and so we are looking for decertification of the district.
What is the wish of the council?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2021-77, Decertify TIF District 38.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Hanson, second by Councilmember Starly. Any discussion? Resolution, call or roll, please.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushik?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2021-92, Establish 2022 Fee Schedules, adopt. Lori.
Yes, the fee schedule is included in your packet tonight, not a lot of changes to the schedule. We did discuss the changes for golf last, at the last meeting. We do have increases for the airport for hangar rent and land rent, that is per their contract. We had a couple of increases in equipment fees, police fees for when they have to do some private work, or I shouldn't say private work, but when they have to do some, lost, totally lost the word.
Security.
Security, yes, thank you very much, and the equipment. So not a lot of changes, but there are some. So we would be looking for approval of the fee schedule tonight.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to adopt Resolution 21, 2021-92, Establishing the Fee Schedule.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Hanson. Any discussion?
Yeah, Mr. President, so the, the changes to the golf course stuff isn't in this.
They were already made in a separate resolution, and then the, the, the greens fee rates are included in this, and that was already updated at the last meeting.
I don't see them in here, because it shows, I know the ones that we approved last meeting showed like 18-hole fee from May to September, just a straight $30. We still, in this one, it says 2794 yet.
Yeah, so that was, we, in, in the previous resolution, we stated as $30, including the tax. This is what that fee would be, and then the tax on top of that equates to $30. It's easier to advertise the, the rate structure that way.
Call or roll, please.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushik?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Gushik?
Yes.
Knopfler?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Carries.
Camp Ripley Veterans State Trail, D and R Agreement. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second agreement that we have on the agenda this evening with the D N R is the one in front of you right now. This one is for the motorized portion of the trail. The D N R has roughly $300,000 remaining that they would like to, see if the city would be able to assist with them in terms of the design, construction, and construction engineering for that portion of, of the trail. The expiration on this agreement is December 21 of 2024, which we should be able to, to meet those requirements. So if the council is willing, we would like approval to enter an agreement with the D N R for the motorized portion in the amount of $300,000 with the Department of Natural Resources.
What is the wish of the council?
Council President, I move to approve the agreement between the City of Little Falls and C R V S T and the D N R.
Second.
I have a question. Oh, sorry, jumped the gun here.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion?
Yes. You sure that money's all allotted towards Little Falls? We're in discussion that maybe as it approaches Little Falls, there's still a segment that needs to be completed, and as far as what I know, that was a part of that, but.
That's what the agreement says. They just recently opened up bids on another segment, and this is the remaining funds from that portion of it, so.
Would you mind if we tabled this? I need to speak to the D N R on this. I mean, coming from the Camp Ripley Veterans Trail side, this is kinda, this is all new to me. I didn't hear about it, and I would like to discuss it with them.
It's up to the council, I guess. I don't.
Is there a time limit on it, that they need it approved by?
I don't know that answer. He did, I mean, he did indicate this morning, and I just received it this morning as well, if we could do it sooner rather than later, because it sounded like they had to encumber the funds in order to, to meet their requirements. So I asked if it could go to the January 3rd, because normally we don't like to add things to the agenda, and he said, use your best judgment on it, so.
Would this be just for engineering?
It was, it can be used for engineering as well as construction for that non-motorized, or the motorized portion of it.
Well, I would like to postpone it if I can till next meeting.
Mr. President, just a order, a proper order is because there's a, a motion already to accept it. In order to move on to postpone, we'd have to reject the current motion and then bring up the motion to postpone. I move to adopt resolution 2021-95, memorandum of agreement with the Attorney General's Office on the opioid settlement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2021-94, establish water sewer, garbage recycling, storm sewer rates, adopt. Lori.
Again, these, the water rates, garbage and recycling rates, we did discuss during the 2022 budget process, so those rates are incorporated into this resolution. We also did an increase to the B O D suspended solids under the wastewater part. Those fees have not been increased in, I, in a long time, I'm going to say about 10 years. So those rates increased somewhat. Sewer and stormwater stayed the same, and garbage drive-by fee, or excuse me, the garbage admin fee stayed the same, but the garbage recycling and water fees have increased somewhat.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to adopt resolution 2021-94, establishing water sewer, garbage recycling, and storm sewer rates.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Canofla. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Starly?
Yes.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Carries.
Resolution 2021-95, memorandum of agreement, Attorney General's Office, National Opioid Settlement, adopt. Chief.
Good evening, Mr. President, again. So the Attorney General's Office reached a settlement on the lawsuit against the opioid distributors and manufacturers. By passing this resolution and approving the participation form, it makes us eligible to receive grant funding through either the state or the county when those funds become available. Cities larger with populations, I believe, of 30,000 or more, or who filed their own lawsuits were eligible for direct payments. But in order for us to participate, we have to approve this resolution and participation form.
What is the wish of the council?
I move to adopt resolution 2021-95, memorandum of agreement with the Attorney General's Office on the opioid settlement.
Second.
Motion by Councilmember Starly, second by Councilmember Lundberg. Any discussion? Call or roll, please.
Hanson?
Yes.
Goschek?
Yes.
Canofla?
Yes.
Liljegren?
Yes.
Lundberg?
Yes.
Zilka?
Yes.
Hurcock?
Yes.
Starly?
Yes.
Carries.
Camp Ripley Veterans Trail, D N R agreement. Greg.
Thank you, Mr. President. The second agreement that we have on the agenda this evening with the D N R is the one in front of you right now. This one is for the motorized portion of the trail. The D N R has roughly $300,000 remaining that they would like to, see if the city would be able to assist with them in terms of the design, construction, and construction engineering for that portion of, of the trail. The expiration on this agreement is December 21 of 2024, which we should be able to, to meet those requirements. So if the council is willing, we would like approval to enter an agreement with the D N R for the motorized portion in the amount of $300,000 with the Department of Natural Resources.
What is the wish of the council?
Council President, I move to approve the agreement between the City of Little Falls and C R V S T and the D N R.
Second. I have a question. Oh, sorry, jumped the gun here.
Motion by Councilmember Lundberg, second by Councilmember Liljegren. Any discussion?
Yes. You sure that money's all allotted towards Little Falls? We're in discussion that maybe as it approaches Little Falls, there's still a segment that needs to be completed, and as far as what I know, that was a part of that, but.
That's what the agreement says. They just recently opened up bids on another segment, and this is the remaining funds from that portion of it, so.
Would you mind if we tabled this? I need to speak to the D N R on this. I mean, coming from the Camp Ripley Veterans Trail side, this is kind of, this is all new to me. I didn't hear about it, and I would like to discuss it with them.
It's up to the council, I guess. I don't.
Is there a time limit on it, that they needed approved by?
I don't know that answer. He did, I mean, he did indicate this morning, and I just received it this morning as well, if we could do it sooner rather than later, because it sounded like they had to encumber the funds in order to, to meet their requirements. So I asked if it could go to the January 3, because normally we don't like to add things to the agenda, and he said, use your best judgment on it, so.
Would this be just for engineering?
It was, it can be used for engineering, as well as construction for that non-motorized,